...management and our vision statement is quality education now, learning for life. Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda, Dr. Lord?
No ma'am, we do not.
Okay, uh, next item is our student and stakeholder engagement, uh, student performance.
So, tonight, uh, I think most of you have met Mr. Scott Rouse, he's our principal at Horizon, and he has a couple of young men with him tonight that I'm gonna ask him to introduce, and they have a presentation tonight. I have Tony Nestor, and I have also Carolyn Thompson.
I'd like to read the good news for today. Bloomfield Middle School hosted several grandparents last month for our annual grandparents day launch. We also recommended and many welcomed many first responders to eat with us on Patriot's Day. It was wonderful to have so many visitors in the building. For Boston, Boston has four students qualified for the Allstate Choir, Luke Phelps, Evan Moxton, Brett Phelps, Holden Underwood, Cock Creek's elementary, Beta students Chloe, Coe, Kendra Smith, Jagger Stone, Janita Novy, and Addison Gaskill qualified in rapid response at the Leadership Summit in Tennessee to compete this summer at Nationals in Disney World. The students were given an engineering-type task with ten minutes to keep their structure standing. We are so proud of our Beta students and their Beta school representatives, Carol Gassim. Foster Heights has started Monday morning meetings to celebrate students and recognize their accomplishments. Students are excited to participate in the meetings and are learning various ways they can be leaders. For the Early Learning Center, one way the Early Learning Center is working on creating a culture of leadership in our building is through class mission statements. Teachers would put, teachers worked with students, asking them what would make a great class. Students would set a variety of things ranging from hugging our teachers, learning to draw, be nice, be a good friend, open our milk, put the lid on the Play-Doh, and not hit or get. These, these make amazing reminders to students because they're their words and their ideas of perfect, of a perfect classroom. NCH and TNHS Fest, students have served on a global panel with students from New York, Jordan, and others signing from all over the world to discuss why this American presidential election matters to young people and what it means to be a global citizen. For New Haven, New Haven is seeking improvement with our attendance while an important, uh, important goal of ninety-six percent. Students get to dance at the end of each day when we have over ninety-six percent of our students. The New Haven kitchen staff is celebrating National Take Your Parents to School with a team up for lunch day. And finally, Old Kentucky Home Middle School has placed an increased focus on being the change we want to see. Motivational speaker Jeremy Taylor reinforced this idea that the student body of teachers last week in a school-wide assembly. School tech staff continues to work at making positive connections with students at home through phone calls, emails, and postcards.
Thank you.
Actually, don't, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So now you guys are gonna tell some good news about Horizon, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, go ahead, we're excited about that.
I'd like to introduce myself and my partner, me and my friend Cameron Thompson. My name's Tony Nestor, and we are here to talk to you about the unique groups at Horizons and the unique activities that we do with our groups. For starters, the Public Relations Group, uh, is, does soft skills trainings. We designed the T-shirts like I'm wearing today for the Horizon School students, and we distribute them out among the, among all of us. We promote Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week and Spirit Week by posting, uh, putting up posters and designing decorations all around the school, and we also display the pledge in the front office.
Our landscaping crew, known as the Dirt Diggers, directed by Ms. Cooney and Mr. Magley, they help plant flowers around various educational facilities, and even around Horizons, for example. Uh, we have a greenhouse in the backyard.
Another group we have, uh, taught by Mr. Mack and Dumis, is the Arts. They create Christmas ornaments that we hang up on the Christmas tree we usually put in the front office. They woven coasters for drinks and other things, and also they made papier-mache masks and molded them and made them all by themselves.
Guardian Greenhouse Group, basically similar to landscaping, except they're actually the greenhouse and the planning people. They plow the gardens, and it's a very new process to help kids learn about their vegetation. And they help, uh, they clean and restructure the greenhouse, and they clean and replant beds around various educational spaces. Actually, here we go. Uh, I wanna speak on my behalf today because Horizons has helped me, 'cause recently I found myself into legal trouble, and Horizons provided me a safe place where I could get mentally focused on what I needed to focus on. And it's taught me a very valuable lesson to stay on the right side of law instead of on the bad side. And it provided me a place where I can get focused, and I'm thankful for Mr. Rouse and Ms. Gosser, 'cause they're both very helpful people. And Horizons is a very great school for kids who have become in trouble with law and/or grades. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
And wait a minute, I just wanna share that I spoke with him, um, just a few minutes before the meeting started, and he had been mentioning that he would like to become a police officer one day, and so he has a goal to do that, and I think that's awesome.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
You might not have the opportunity to see him very often, but Tony works with us for an hour a day. He, uh, we have students that work in the morning and in the afternoon, and Tony covers the gap, uh, so everybody gets to have lunch. So he does a great job for us as well.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to the both of you. I know you all have been working really, really hard.
So, I'm gonna ask a question that might get me in trouble, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. So I, I was asked earlier today, what, what have, what kind of school is Horizons, and really more specifically, what kind of student should be at Horizons? So when you guys think about your experience, and I, I think you wouldn't be here if it had not been a positive experience, which Rouse would probably, uh, make a good selection with Ms. Gosser helped too, but, uh, what, what do you think is the kind of student, what are the situations maybe that a student, uh, coming from is gonna be successful at Horizons? Does that make sense?
I think that any kind of student coming from anywhere can be successful at Horizons for the simple fact that regardless of what you've done or how you've gotten there, they don't use it against you, they don't teach you any differently, they don't make it any different for anyone else there for just grades or just, or, for me, legal troubles for other people, grades, and it, either way, I mean, it helps you to focus, it's a learning environment that's unique and not like high school, it, but at the same time, it, and it's unique, but in a good way. Like, it, it isolates you, but at the same time, it also can focus you from, away from distractions that you had in normal school, like, but at the same time, also, I've been in, uh, alternative schools that locked down and shut down, you didn't talk, you couldn't have interactions with others, you got no freedom, you just sat on a computer, and and I think it's a better learning environment to have actual interaction because a computer, what computer can teach as much as someone having, like, face interactions with you and talking with you, and being able to explain something that you don't understand instead of just telling you the information expecting you did, and I, I think that's why Horizons excels at making even the worst of students and worst of kids focus more on what they need to do with graduate.
Cameron, do you have something you wanna add? You don't have to.
Uh, Horizons, get your priorities straight, that's all.
So I, I said when I asked the question, that it might, that question might get me in trouble, but your answer saved my rear end.
I wondered if Mr. Rouse slipped in somewhere. Well, I appreciate you.
And I think that the key for me to what you said is, no matter what your past is, you get treated the same at Horizons. And what that tells me is the expectations are high, but we don't worry about what got you here, we just worry about what's gonna get you to the next step. And, uh, I, that's what I hear you guys saying, and that, that's what I appreciate. Thanks for sharing that. I owe it.
They say you.
Oh yeah, we'll keep you around.
I, I'll just say, as you were talking, I was watching your principal and your teacher over there, and the looks on their face, I'd say with what you said made both of them very proud as well. Uh, you could kinda tell since they were sitting over there going, yeah, we, we've had the chance to make a difference, and what you all have been able to accomplish means a lot to folks like, like your teacher and your principal.
Good stuff, guys.
I just wanna say thank you for coming in and sharing your story, 'cause it's, it's good to hear good things coming out of Horizons, you know, and not just bad, it's good, and apology too. And thank you all.
Thank you. Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, um, expect the best, right there.
So each month, we recognize, uh, four folks who have gone above and beyond the call of duty for the, uh, roles that they serve in the school system. So, uh, we have a certified staff member, it's usually a teacher, and then we have a classified staff member that can be a lot of different jobs, a parent and a student. So we have, uh, each of those here tonight, and so what I'm going to do is read the information that we got from the nominating form, and I'll read through all four of them, and then we'll ask those four folks to come forward, and we'll take a picture and give you a, a small token of our appreciation for helping all of us have higher expectations. So our certified staff member is Ms. Megan Robey from Foster Heights, who is a leader at Foster Heights. She challenges students to take risks and step outside their comfort zones in order to learn and grow. Her positive attitude and energy are contagious and bring out the best in those around her. Ms. Robey developed a process to reward students for their positive choice-making and led the school-wide implementation of that process. She has assumed leadership roles on school action teams and works hard to influence positive cultural change throughout Foster Heights. She exemplifies what it means to expect the best. Our classified staff member is Ms. Nancy Doams, and she's the custodial staff at the Early Learning Center, where she's always expecting the best in her position and from the school. Our halls, windows, and classrooms are spotless. She will lend a hand to anyone who needs it. She will walk students to class coming off the bus, help nominate, uh, excuse me, help students in the cafeteria, and never complains about anything. We all love and appreciate her. And then our parent is Ms. Stacy Harden. She is the parent volunteer group president at Bloomfield Elementary School, where she has enlisted a great team that puts the students first at Bloomfield. Without her help and guidance, our students wouldn't be able to have some of the things they are fortunate to have there. And our student is Ms. Elena Miller. She's also from Bloomfield, so we know some good things are happening there. Elena is a smart and articulate young lady. She's very conscientious about her work and always aims for the stars. Elena is a leader in the classroom and always willing to help her peers, and her parents are probably good at giving her guidance on what to do in the classroom, since they've spent a little time there themselves, haven't they, Elena? Very good. Well, if the four of you would come forward, we'd like to say thank you to you and take a picture with you, and give us just a minute to stand.
That's excellent.
You're good. Sure, good. Well, I tell you what, I don't have to do anything.
We're getting better practice.
Yes, we are.
Alright, am I ready? Hey, what, let's, let's handle these four just a slight bit, and then that takes a, any sort of glare off of it, it's just a little trick there to keep the glare off the glass. Okay, so am I ready? Big smiles, one, two, three. More time. I always like to shoot more than one, just in case I cannot see somebody blink. Everybody has their eyes up? One, two, three. I'll shoot it on the expected one.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Well, well done.
I was gonna hike her up on candy and send her home, which I go, oh, but she didn't. You, you wanna? What grade is she in? What grade are you in, Elena? Third? Third grade.
That's a pretty good start.
People of the month. Good job. Okay, the next item is our operations consent agenda. That includes, uh, personal actions, treasures report, bills and claims, units report, leave of absence, minutes from previous meeting, overnight, out of city trips, fundraiser, request an educational enhancement opportunity, request, uh, these items were already sent to us previously, uh, so we've had a chance to go over them, review them. Do I hear a motion to, uh, accept all these items?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Page, second. I'll second. Second by Ms. Brady, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, our next item is effective performance management, and under that is, uh, guarantee and energy-saving contract, uh, GESC project. Uh, Mr. Hogginsman, you're gonna help us select CMTA as provider for performance contract services.
I'll recommend that. We've got, uh, three items related to a potential performance contract that we've been talking about for some months, the focus of which, the centerpiece, I guess, fair way of saying, the new HVAC at Bloomfield Middle School. But there are, uh, some other, most of our buildings in the district would be affected by that. We had a really good experience with a recent project that, uh, we did a couple of years ago, talked about that, we give reports back as to the savings, and, uh, so our recommendation tonight is that you approve CMTA engineering, uh, as the provider of those performance contract services. Uh, I wanna remind you, uh, take us back a couple of years, you're not signing a contract tonight, you're not legally binding yourself, you could always decide, we changed our mind, we're not comfortable with this or with that. Uh, I expect contracts to be presented to the board in, at the December meeting for action. Now after that, then we're pretty well locked into the project. But certainly in between now and then, if you have concerns or questions, uh, we'll be glad to get back to you on any of those concerns or questions that you might have. Uh, but the action we're asking you to take tonight helps us start the process, or continue the process, and get us to a point where we approve a contract ultimately and get to work on it.
So, I'm sorry, I, I was just, if I remember correctly, so this is the item that, I forget the gentleman's name from CMTA.
John Gasser was here at the work session.
That was here at the work session back a few weeks ago, uh, where the focus, the main focus is on Bloomfield Middle School and the HVAC system, but to be able to help spread the cost, the, the, the cost of that, we're looking at savings across several parts of the district. And that was the one, wasn't it, it was like a little spreadsheet with little boxes that were checked to say this, these are the areas where we're going to be working at Foster Heights, or at Thomas Nelson, or at Nelson County High School to improve energy efficiency to help offset the cost of the Bloomfield Middle.
That's correct. I, I sort of jumped ahead, I just, uh, that is the third item of the three.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We'll put that spreadsheet in tonight, that's quite alright. Uh, but the first item of the three, uh, related to the project is selection of CMTAs of, of the engineer on the project, we'll make that recommendation.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to select CMTA? Do I need to do that?
Yes, motion.
Okay, oh, usually we have a decision paper, I don't have one. All I've got is...
It's in the attachment of the file line.
Well, I'll get, um...
I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay, uh, they, uh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You bet.
Somebody has my back today. Okay, we have a motion to select CMTA as provider for, uh, performance contract service. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Norman, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Now, uh, Mr. Hogginsman, approval of BG1 and BG2 for GFSC project.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, if you have a decision paper, I hope, uh, you can pack it there, uh, that we discussed again a couple of weeks ago, the work session, I'll, I'm gonna go back to the BG1, page two, tab two, the financial page of BG1, Carl, if you could go there, I think that's probably the most, that is the correct, no, that's BG2, I wanna go to BG1. That's the perfect place right there, where we wanna be. This is the financial page of BG1, just a reminder, uh, currently, the estimate is that this project will be about three, well, it'll be three million, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And on the right side of that sheet, you'll see that, uh, there's two numbers, sometimes there's one, uh, there's two numbers there because we are proposing at this point to fund the project, uh, essentially half the general fund, like we did phase one, and the other half would bond, uh, dollars, capital funds. Uh, I think we get, uh, a couple of benefits from that. Number one, uh, that, by using those bond dollars, it does not vanquish what we have left, it leaves money there if we have a need, or if we have a project, uh, that we identify within the next year or two. Um, and, uh, secondly, it eliminates us tapping into prior savings to pay for the general fund projects, does that make sense? Because this project will easily pay for the one point six million dollar portion, or excuse me, the one point eight million dollar portion on its own without tapping into prior savings easily. That's a very, very conservative savings estimates. So I think it's a win-win. Uh, you might recall, and these are things we'll talk about as we get further down the line, we don't have to approve tonight, but we did touch on the financing piece in the work session, I'll remind you, right now, it looks like we'll be recommending a fifteen-year bond issue, which again, obviously, it's, it lowers your interest rate just like a one on a mortgage. Um, and it, uh, your bond potential recovers quick, more quickly. So I think this has got a lot of potential to be a win-win to the district. But we would ask that you approve that BG1, uh, which, uh, when, when bids actually come in, it could change ever so slightly, and we think those numbers are pretty close, but there could be some slight changes to that. Uh, and then the attached BG2s, you might recall, I was talking about those a couple of weeks ago, there's about fifty-four pages of them, because every building that is a part of the project, we have to submit a separate BG2 for, and each of those BG2s, it talks about how much energy are we using now, and how much do we think we're gonna be using after the project. And that's what those forms are, uh, are designed to, to show, and we share this information with Department of Education. So we need you all to be willing to approve those two items, uh, so we can proceed with the project.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion then to approve the BG1 and BG2 for the district performance contract? Do I have a motion? Uh, Ms. Brady made a motion to approve these BG1 and 2, do I hear a second?
Aye, second.
Page second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, now, Mr. Hogginsman, we have approved project scope document for KDE review.
Carl, if you would click on that Excel spreadsheet up there, we're gonna go back to the document Mr. Jack you mentioned, uh, I hope this is it. No, that's the wrong one. There we go. This document, uh, again, we talked about it, uh, a couple of weeks ago, but these are the, you'll see the buildings across the top, you'll see the categories of the project, the, the various pieces of the project, um, to the left, down the left column there, and you'll see that the, the X's indicate the buildings that get that part of the project, does that make sense? Um, and, you know, if you, and again, I think, I think we covered most of this, we didn't get any questions, I'd assume, uh, we're okay, but if you have some, certainly forward those to us, we can, we'll get back to you. But some of the work, if you're concerned about, well, why isn't this building getting that, it's likely because it's already got it, or our maintenance staff has already done it, or we've done it as part of another project, or it's not cost-effective to do it in that particular building at this point in time. Uh, but that is essentially a, a snapshot of what this project will include, uh, and essentially every building in the district is affected in some way by this project, and we think, uh, we hope it continues to, uh, ensure that we're gonna be one of the most energy-efficient districts in the state. We hope to improve our position.
What are we now?
Third.
That's what I'm talking about. We're pretty happy, yeah, we're pretty good, we like being number one, you know, in the ranks. Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, approval of the project scope for the district's performance contract?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Page made a motion to, uh, approve this, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Jack, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hogginsman. Okay, and next, the item is our co-adjourned readiness, uh, math grant, and that would be Ms. Anne Marie Weathers.
I'm just asking, um, that you review the applications that were submitted earlier this month for the math grant, it equals to fifty thousand dollars each for each of the schools listed, and that's all the elementary schools, so I just need your approval to fix up those applications, okay?
Are there any matching problems to it? Required?
Just anything that goes above and beyond the grant, like if a teacher's salary is over fifty thousand dollars, then the district would support that. That's currently what we're doing with the two schools now that have the math grants.
What schools are they?
Uh, Boston and New Haven have math grants currently, but all five have reappplied for the year.
So do I hear a motion to approve this, the math grant, a permission for math grant?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Norman made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Brady, thank you, second that motion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, motion carried.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, next, student and shareholder engagement, guest comment, do we have any comments? Do, uh, a person gets two minutes in a group, representing a group, or we get five minutes, having none? Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Don't get too excited, people. Thank you, Mr. I can give the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Norman, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Uh, next, we are to convene, do I hear a motion to convene an executive session for KRS sixty-one point eighty-one zero one C to discuss pending litigation?
I'm with motion.
Uh, Mr. Norman made a motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Page, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay. Thank you. We'll slip through it. Do I hear a motion to reconvene our, uh, regular session? Make motion. Uh, Ms. Brady made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the request, uh, to authorize Anthony Orr, superintendent and legal counsel to find a live settlement as discussed in closed session in the case of Curtis versus Nelson County School District, um, I said, or whatever, sixth, at the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, CA number, case number, let's see, I did that, sixteen, that, six, one, one, eight.
Motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jack, you made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Page, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, thank you. Uh, now, do I hear a motion to, um, adjourn our, um, regular session?
Motion.
Ms. Brady, uh, made a motion, second?
Second.
Second.
Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, session closed. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.